Go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 10th meeting of the Milton Select Board. Please, I'm calling this to order at 7:02. Please join me in rising if you're able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Milano, could you grab me the sheet for the public comment? So we're going to move into public comments. By rule, the Select Board allows 21 minutes total for public comment, with individual speakers asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. I will give you a verbal warning at 2 minutes and 30 seconds. We do have, I see one hand up online, but we've also got some folks that have arrived in person. I think we should be able to get to everybody, so why don't we start in person? And we're going to begin with Ms. Friedman-Hanna.
Good evening. I'm Karen Friedman-Hanna. I live at 3 Norway Road in Milton, and I'm a precinct two town meeting member and one of the signers on the citizens petition that is going to be spoken about at town meeting. I am here tonight to ask the Select Board to consider, strongly consider, having the UTEL company be able to discuss both the plan that the warrant committee has, not warrant committee, the planning board, excuse me, has put forth, the 10% noncompliant plan, but also the 25% plan that the citizens petition discusses. This was the plan that they came up with, with the planning board. It was paid for by taxpayer money. It was requested by the town, and we are just putting it forth onto town meeting to have a vote. But we strongly hope that Select Board will agree to have them discuss both plans, that it would be not providing the town meeting with necessary information if they can't hear both plans that had been created, especially since this was the charge that was put before them was to come up with a 25% compliant plan. And as a personal request also, I have to ask everybody that you really strongly consider supporting the 25% compliant plan. There was just another lawsuit that got thrown out by the state, by various towns, making, that it's not an unfunded mandate. And we feel very strongly that it's time for the town to be fiscally responsible and compliant with the law. And so I hope that you will consider supporting the 25% compliant plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Why don't we go online, Joan Fall, or their iPad? Joan, if you can unmute yourself.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
My, good evening. My name is Joan Fall. I live at 172 Granite Ave, and I'm a precinct seven town meeting member. And I'm calling in tonight to urge the Select Board to pursue the mandatory judgment argument in court. A mayor 16 months ago, on a blustery Valentine's Day, close to 9,500 Milton voters voted on Article One, and 54% of those voters voted no. That's the most votes cast in any local election in Milton in the past five years, including more than this past April. I would ask you to put aside your personal views and as Select Board members for the town of Milton, represent the no vote. Allow us to have closure on this issue. Let's let the judgment go, come from the court. I've heard people say that they think that the no voters do not support the no vote any longer. Some, that could be true for some of the voters, but I would also challenge that some of the former yes voters would now vote no as they've seen the 25% plan. Prior to the completion of the rapid transit compliant 25% plan, the voters were not aware of the impact that this plan would have on their neighborhoods and on the town as a whole. Personally, I have empathy for these voters and their neighborhoods. I agree the 25% zoning plan will dramatically change the fabric of the neighborhoods while attempting to meet regulations that I feel are unfair to Milton because of its incorrect classification. I'm not saying we shouldn't do our fair share, but I'm asking, why should Milton be doing more than its fair share in an attempt to solve a state and national wide housing issue with a zoning plan that doesn't guarantee any affordable housing stock for Milton residents or employees? Please vote to seek a fair resolution via declaratory judgment. I believe that you will be respected for standing up with the voters that voted no when the final, no matter what the final judgment is. The residents of Milton will rest assured that their Select Board pursued every legal avenue available and stood up for the voters by using our democratic process to the fullest. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Back in the room, we have Mr. Sullis.
Good evening. Mike Sullis, 69 Fairbanks Road. Over the past several years, and particularly in these last months, we've seen from some of our national political leaders a disregard for the laws of this country and a disparagement of our country's courts and legal institutions. And that is why it is particularly important at this moment for the leaders of this community to show regard for the law and respect for the decisions of our courts. We, and you in particular, have an opportunity to do that in deciding how to proceed under the MBTA Communities Act. The MBTA Communities Act was a problem that we neither sought nor we created, but it was a problem that we needed to solve. Unfortunately, for nearly two years, we have failed to solve this problem at great cost to this community. Where we are now is not a surprise. It's not a mistake. Two years ago, all of us, Select Board, Planning Board, Town Meeting Members, were advised by Town Council and others about how this would end up, and here we are. Some chose to disregard the law instead of showing regard for it. Some chose to mislead instead of leading. While the failure to solve this problem has cost us financially, it has cost us even more in civic agitation and distraction. And so, at long last, now that the courts have said what we always knew they would, can we finally join together as a community and move on? This board can begin tonight with a unanimous vote to support Article Six, the citizens petition to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. The only alternative to passing Article Six is more financial costs to the town, a special master who will impose a zoning plan on the town, and court-imposed fines. State Senator Driscoll, who has joined in this discussion, should also show regard for the law that he voted to create and for the courts by publicly endorsing Article Six without delay. A unanimous Select Board vote tonight endorsing Article Six and Bill Driscoll's endorsement would go a long way towards uniting this town, solving the problem, and finally moving past this issue. So you have the opportunity tonight to stand up, to show regard for the law and for the courts, and to lead. Please take that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Ms. Chaparro next.
Hi, everyone. My name is Camila Chaparro. I live at 19 Chilton Park. I'm here this evening at the invitation of Chair Zoll to speak a little bit about Connect Milton. I'm one of the seven members of the Steering Committee of Connect Milton, which we founded in 2023. And our mission is to foster community connections centered around diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, and civic engagement. So we're an entirely volunteer-run effort, and our activities aim to build a more inclusive and engaged community by linking residents to each other, to local resources, and to civic opportunities. So just to give you an idea of what we've been up to since we were founded two years ago, we have a robust set of FAQs on our website that address a wide range of questions that a lot of new residents frequently have, everything from what precinct am I in and where do I vote to questions about why do I walk my dog or early education opportunities and the public schools. And we've also used that website as a hub for information for residents for local elections, including this past election where we included a comprehensive list of all townwide candidates in one location for residents to find that information more easily. We also send out a regular newsletter about community events and upcoming elections and also events that we are organizing. And in terms of events that we have hosted and organized, we've, in the last year, organized three informational events around civic engagement, including Town Government 101, Town Finances 101, which featured Mr. Milano. And tomorrow night, we're actually starting a new session on Town Committees 101. And these sessions, we've held in person and invited the community to come to learn more about how Milton works and how they can get involved. And they've also been recorded by Milton Access TV, so are available after the fact for people who aren't able to join us. And finally, last but not least, we're really excited about the work that we're doing to welcome new residents to Milton. Starting in June 2024, we began delivering welcome bags twice a year. So these are bags that include information about the town. Most recently, we have included small items and coupons from local business sponsors. And we invite current Milton residents to help us deliver those bags as a way of current residents reaching out to new neighbors. And we also started a New to Milton Social, where we invited all of the new residents to come and meet other current Milton residents. So far, we've welcomed just over 350 new households to Milton in the last year and a half. And we hope that that'll be just a start in ensuring, starting residents on getting to know the community and getting engaged in the community. So thank you very much for the opportunity. We're really excited to be doing this work and, of course, would appreciate your ideas for future events and activities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. We don't have anybody else online, but we still have Mr. Cristo here.
Hi, good evening, all. Is that a little too loud?
Maybe not that close to the mic.
Okay. A little better, maybe?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Thank you. Mark Cristel, 17 Waldo Road, wrote, "Nice to be here with you all tonight. I'd like to request that this board take two actions tonight. One is to move forward on the declaratory judgment prepared by Attorney Dougherty, a most necessary action in definitively seeking clarity for our longstanding ambiguous classification. The assigned rapid transit classification is the heart of our argument. That argument is legitimate because it has teeth and staying power. Our classification alone remains unresolved and is what's driving the most consequential and questionable zoning demand for Milton. Milton is the only community with a classification whose basis is the Matapan Trolley. We stand alone. Our town deserves closure. The classification must be addressed." Point two, I ask that you please share HLC's zoning reduction list that I presented to you two weeks ago on the town website for the public to view. It is very important to provide information to town meeting members and resident voters of HLC's extensive zoning reductions that benefited 90 of the total 177 municipalities, that's more than half, of which 48 communities had reductions of 50% and greater. That is substantial relief. That's the relief that Milton is entitled to and should expect. By enumerating the facts, that is, the operational inferiority of the small Matapan Trolley with no ability to transport passengers downtown, that Ashmont is the rapid transit and the plans to convert the Matapan Trolley to rapid transit by the MBTA were never realized, are three solid points that confirm that the Matapan Trolley is not rapid transit. And the questionable basis is driving a punitive zoning demand tasked Milton. It is incorrect, and therefore it's unfair. I speak not just for myself, but for many. Remember, just last year, 54% of voters nixed the 25% plan. That, too, is substantial. The resolution of the ambiguous classification remains unresolved. This board has a real opportunity to address this weighty matter, capitalize on the talent and legal expertise being offered for free, from what I'm told, and couple that with the expertise and insight of one of your own with high-level work experience in state government to affect beneficial outcome for those you represent. Yes, your neighbors are counting on you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody else in the room that is hoping to speak or online? Well, you can catch us at a second session if you missed it. So I'll go ahead and declare Citizens Speak closed. Our next item on the agenda is that we are going to move into executive session. So I'm going to make a motion that we enter executive session for a discussion regarding strategy with respect to political, sorry, with potential litigation regarding MGLC 40A, Section 3A, the MBTA Communities Act, and 670 CMR 72.00, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. The Select Board will return to open session. Seconded by Mr. Wells, any discussion, or we can just move to a roll call vote? Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Hegarty?
Aye.
Mr. Cohane?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, aye.
And aye for myself as well. So we are going to be recessed into executive session. We will be coming back. I'm hoping that we'll come back in the next 30 minutes, so stay tuned. But I can't promise you a specific timeline, so. But thank you very much. We're in recess. Thank you for your patience, everyone. We are calling this back into our regular session. The board has not opted to pursue legal remedies at this time beyond what we've already done. I'm going to ask, Mr. Cohane has a statement that he'd like to read, so if you'd like to do that now.
I think I'll do it in public response.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Any other comments that we'd like to make on this at the time? Okay, then, Ms. Hegarty, you can join us again.
Oh, should I do it now because of that?
Well, it's fine, because, you know.
Should we leave then? It's not a vote.
It's not, it's just, if you're making a statement, she can. She's just sitting here for it.
That she could be present for.
All right, so our next item, while we're waiting for Ms. Hegarty, I'll just maybe introduce quickly, is the fiscal year 2025 Town and School Budget Update. And I know that Mr. Milano will be providing us with that update. And now that Ms. Hegarty is in the room and can hear it, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to share a couple items as we approach fiscal year end, the town's and school budget. Fiscal year ends on June 30th, 2025. We have, the school committee has shared and discussed publicly at their meeting last week that their forecasted deficit for fiscal '25 is now in the million-dollar ballpark. We, if the board recalls, town meeting approved an Article Two at the annual town meeting, additional contribution to the reserve fund from free cash of $700,000 in anticipation of a need within the school department to use that funding to close off fiscal year '25. That was based on some of their forecasts produced at the time, now that's several months ago when we were preparing that warrant in February, March timeframe. As they approach and get closer to year end, they have revised that forecast to a million dollars. And when we met with the school committee, as members of the board will recall, they did say this is an estimate, and they did request a million dollars be set aside in the reserve fund as that met kind of where they felt it could end up at. At the June 16th special town meeting next week, Article One proposes to move $300,000 of free cash into the reserve fund. So with those two votes, assuming it's approved, there would be a million dollars of free cash available in the reserve fund for the schools to make a request to the warrant committee to transfer that funding to their budget. And so that is what we would expect that they would do between now and the year end. So if the Select Board would like to discuss this in more detail with the school committee or the school administration, we can certainly invite them and coordinate that for a future meeting. And John Phelan started earlier this month. Amy Dexter and John and Katie Blake and I met yesterday for a couple of hours to go through some items ongoing related to this and others. So, you know, we're working collaboratively, and we will continue to do so. So we can coordinate that if the board requests. Separately, I'm happy to provide an update on the town side of fiscal '25 if the board is interested at this time or has any questions first on the school piece.
Any questions about the schools?
Just, budget, ballpark, sort of, maybe, do we know that it's a million, or we still don't?
They are working very carefully to keep it no more than a million dollars. But there is certainly a couple more weeks in the fiscal year. One thing I would add is that in terms of salary budgets, this payroll that's being paid out this week includes teachers, as some may know or not, they can take a lump-sum payment. So the payroll that goes out this week includes all of those teachers who don't get paid through the summer, but instead get paid this week. So that forecasting and calculation of where is the budget going to land on salaries and wages, now it can be much more easily fine-tuned once all that money is out the door. So, you know, we're hopeful, and our expectation is it'll stay at that million, but I can't make a promise here today.
Mr. Wells?
So that's my issue. We have 20 days left. And if the million isn't enough, what are we doing? Because we've turned over more rocks than I can count in this best year. What do you want to do then? Because you've had, you've given them the seven, you have a town meeting on Monday to give them an additional three. We've used all our, like, we don't have any more money, so.
No, that's the answer, is there aren't, there are no other sources. So with these appropriations into the reserve fund, we'll have about $1,265,000 in the reserve fund. So it's a million-plus sum. Although, as I'll talk about in a moment, we do have some cost pressures on the town side.
On the town side. Go ahead, go ahead.
Covered there, but I would agree.
Do we want to do any more school-specific questions before we go to town?
I disagree with the idea that we do need jointly.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I agree with that move.
Okay.
There's too much of a roller coaster with us, and I think we have to continue with dialogue.
I would agree with that, too.
Just, so my, you good? As Amy has always said, you don't want to end the year on a negative. You end the year on the negative, you get a DOL whack right away, and then we're in trouble. So that's my fear, is because you've gone down every road we can possibly think of to meet these deficits. And that's my fear. So go ahead on the town side. And I know we're in the last 90 days, so I know there's some capability there, too, so go ahead.
Thank you. So first, I will turn it to a little bit of positive news. We've updated our revenue forecast. We expect to have, you know, exceed our revenue forecast. Right now, we're looking at about a $2.2 million revenues over expectations. So we have had, and we continue to have, you know, we budget other revenue items conservatively in order to overshoot that when it comes to actual revenues. We're on track to do that, to exceed our revenue by about $2.2 million with another full month left and certain accounts still to come in. Property tax revenue is based on an account as of May 31st, so there is a month of May for collections to come in. And then in terms of some of our other local receipts, there are still, there's still collections available. So right now, we're on track on our forecast to exceed revenue by $2.2 million. And that doesn't include any additional property tax revenue and a few other items that might still trickle in between now and June 30th. So that's on the good news. And we, even in the fiscal '26 budget in our forecast, our local receipts forecast is less in fiscal '26 than it was in fiscal '25. We, because of the market and, you know, concern about where things might be, we actually reduced that forecast in '26 from where it was in '25, even though this year we're on course to exceed that. So we continue to budget conservatively, turning to expenses. There are three accounts that we expect to request transfers for, really for, one is $1,500. So, but as we've talked extensively this year, as we were building the budget, that health insurance has been a cost pressure on our budget in fiscal '26 because of higher enrollment, but also an increase in premiums. That is the case for our current budget year forecast. We expect to end the year in a deficit on health insurance, driven by more people on the plans than had been anticipated. And in addition to that, employees are paying that 14% premium, employees in the town are paying the 14% premium increase this month in June for July. So that wasn't budgeted. So this significant health insurance premium increase for fiscal '26 essentially goes into effect into pay this month. So right now, we're very conservative, expecting to overspend that by half a million dollars. We're optimistic it could be less than that, and knock on wood, it'll be much less than that, but we'll see. The tricky part about forecasting that, again, is the lump-sum payroll that I talked about that is being paid this week. So this is the week where we'll be able to really fine tune where health insurance will be because all of those teachers who don't get paid in the summer are paying all of their deductions now. So there's a little bit of a process involved to chew that up, which we'll be doing over the next couple of days, and then we'll report back. Unemployment historically is a little bit over budget. That's been the case. So we're looking at about a $20,000 overspend in that budget. And then lastly, the other item that I've mentioned a couple of times is snow and ice. We budget $160,000 for snow and ice expenses each year within the DPW budget. Snow and ice has never cost $160,000. It's always in deficit. This year, it's in deficit by about $650,000. So that means our total snow and ice expense for fiscal '25 was $811,000 against a budget of $160,000. In years where that deficit is much lower, the Department of Public Works is able to cover that, those expenses through other budget lines. We won't be able to do that this year. We anticipate needing to transfer money from other departments to cover that. So overall, we expect today that the town departments will have turnbacks. So we will underspend our overall appropriations on the town budget side. However, the turnbacks we've had in recent years, where we've had several hundred thousand dollar turnbacks in health insurance, for example, and other budget, those are not going to materialize. So as we start to think about where is free cash going to be certified for next year, while we will have revenues in excess of our projections, which is positive, we will not have significant turnbacks or significant savings in our departmental budgets because we're going to have to look to transfer money from, for example, from police to DPW or from the Select Board budget. We've had a vacancy in our budget through the Planning Director. So there will be a significant amount of transfers, pulling money from one budget to another to solve some of these deficits that we're talking about. And ultimately, the reserve fund there is available if the schools request a million dollars. There's $265,000 there in the reserve fund. So we expect a positive result again in fiscal '25 on expenditures. But I just wanted to provide that update. And in terms of Mr. Wells's question about if we are in deficit at year end, what does that mean? So it means really two things. So first, the Department of Revenue will withhold any amount in deficit from our free cash certification. So say, for round numbers' sakes, we overspend our budget, our appropriations, by half a million dollars. So when they go to come up with our free cash number, if they said, okay, Milton, you have two point. Milton, you have $2.5 million of free cash, well, they're going to withhold that half million that were in deficit. In addition to that, we need to close that deficit before we set the tax rate in November, December. So then we would have to go find half a million dollars to appropriate to close that deficit. So it's kind of a double hit where they hold back free cash and they make the town raise the deficit. So it's a position we don't want to be in because for that half million dollar overspend, you're really, in a way, taking a million dollars out of your accounts. So we expect, as things stand today, that won't be the case. But it is possible that if things end up in the worst case scenario in terms of the school budget and other budgets, that we might have to have some trickier conversations as things stand today. And my expectation is that won't be the case.
And we'll have clarity on that by the end of this week.
Yeah, each day, it's a little bit easier to nail down those numbers. With the departments in terms of salaries and wages, it's pretty easy. Once we get through this payroll, then it's about chasing down, making sure all the vendors get in their invoices, no invoices crop up that were unexpected. And for most of our departments, that's not much of an issue. You think about the bigger ones, police, fire, DPW, where those things could come up. But for the most part, our forecast is pretty tight, barring kind of unforeseen or things that come up in the next two weeks that we don't expect and we need to respond to. That could be emergencies. And my direction to department heads has been to, the budget is done and new expenses are on hold until you hear from me otherwise.
Other questions for Mr. Marano?
Yes, I agree.
You look like you had a question.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking.
I have a few, but I could see her wheels spinning over there.
Yeah, I do have wheels spinning. I mean, I really do think we need a joint meeting. And I, so it's one thing to come, to come in over and for us to have to transfer funds in a year where we're coming off of, you know, COVID relief and whatnot. But going forward, we really need to understand how do, what do we, how do we feel the next year is going to go and what steps are being taken now to mitigate any potential headwinds?
Yeah, I think, not to respond, but I, you know, we do have the Milton Budget Coordination Committee agenda item, and I think that that might.
It might, that's probably the appropriate form for it. But I think that, you know, I'm just speaking out loud. This is, this is really important.
I agree. Mr. Wells?
So a couple of things. So the one thing that you just referred to on the town side is apples and oranges. So I think from what, I understand what you're doing. You're using the last 90 days, which allows you to move percentages on the power to the power on the town side. So the only relief you could give to the schools, if I, did I hear you say this, 265,000 or reserve fund?
The max over the, so the only source of funding that can go from one side of the aisle to the other is from the reserve. So that's 1,265,000. So that is the most that we could transfer from town side to the schools. We can't take money, for example, from police and transfer that money to schools without a town meeting vote. The warrant committee is authorized to take money out of the reserve fund to any town department, including the schools.
And that would, that would be unprecedented that I can think of, to take money from the town side and move it to the schools. It's just, because you, now you're punishing the departments who managed within their budgets and taking it from them. So that's definitely. The third thing is, if there's a delta on the, not just the double hit, the free cash and making it up, if I'm correct and my memory serves right, that would impact our bond rating as well, could? It's a hit on your bond rating?
Ending the year in a deficit.
Yeah, it's not a good thing. Yeah, it's okay.
It might not be a hit, but it might be a comment and a concern that they identify and will want to keep on, but it would not go unnoticed.
So recalling a couple of comments from a few years ago that were, not enough, but they were negative comments in the same, those kind of comments aren't good comments to have, they're just not in the overall budget picture. So I just, this is a difficult way to have to manage a budget of our entire community. So I get it. So on the DPW's snow and ice, you want to cut, you think you can cover all that within the movements and we won't have to uncover, because I know snow and ice is one of the things you can. Depending on if you had, had to fall in another rabbit hole, that could be an exercise you could take if you had to. So I can see what you're saying. You don't want to do that.
That is a great.
You want to get rid of it, right?
And I meant to mention that is, under finance law, we are allowed to leave snow and ice in deficit without that hits a free cash that I mentioned. So one option could be that we maybe don't close all of that deficit. And we say, you know, between now and a fall town meeting, we'll identify some amount of money, whether it's the certified free cash or new revenue that we anticipate for fiscal '26 or reductions in fiscal '26 appropriations to say, we're going to take that $200,000 and apply that to fiscal '25 snow and ice. So that remains an option that would sidestep the impact to free cash that I mentioned for other deficits. But any department can't end in deficit except for snow and ice.
Other questions?
I just want, I can see why you don't want to do that if you don't, because if the deficit's a deficit, you got, it's just Robin Peter to pay Paul. You got to find a way to pay it after July versus.
No, right. But, you know, it's a failsafe, I think. If somehow we go, it's a failsafe to the failsafe of the existing 285, which is also a failsafe to the million.
It's only 265. You're 20 over already.
At some point, at some point, we're going to run out of life jackets. But yeah. And I think it would be nice to be able to close the books on '25 and acknowledge the issues that arose and when what happens, address them, and then start '26 fresh, knowing there's not going to be similar deficits in '26. So rather than carry that forward to a fall town meeting to avoid that, just to be able to say, look, '25 happened, we've talked about it, we've addressed it, these are the changes we've made moving forward. It would be nice to close the books, literally.
Saying that 265 is definitely going to close the books here, or are we still thinking there's something that's pending?
You don't know. You just don't know. There's 20 days left.
Today, I feel pretty good. If the schools come in at a million, I feel pretty good on the town side.
Yeah.
So let's, we have a meeting before town meeting on next Monday. Can you give us, could you plan to give us at that meeting just the update on how the books went this week with those lump sum payments?
Sure.
Because I think at that point, we should have either a flashing red light or green light or yellow.
Yeah.
Whatever. Mr. Wells?
Can I amend your suggestion?
You can.
Well, we'll meet with both committees that night before we even go in. We're both going to be in the same building.
The school bill, the school committee? Yeah, they're there.
They meet too. They meet.
The only, it would just be, it's not a normal meeting. It's not got the normal audience. We would be able to record it, but I would just note that it's, if the intention is a true joint meeting, it might be better to find a mutual date that works, that it would be a traditional kind of.
I do think it would be better to have it with.
I just don't have a lot of days. That's why I'm like, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to like, you'll be out seven, you're out seven nights a week before you know it. And it's just, I just realize we're both in the same building at the same time. This isn't a big issue. I think to, to Ms. Hagerty's point, to get them in the room and at least amongst us quickly to say, okay, it's 20, by then it'll be even less, it'll be 12 days or 13, you know.
I could see if the board's available at like six, maybe we could meet in the school committee's traditional meeting room early at six.
How about, how about this? Can I amend German?
Yeah, no, I didn't amend it. I was just, I'm just, I'm thinking, I mean, every day counts.
So, so my suggestion was going to be, why don't we, let's get the update still from Nick on the Monday. And I'm just going to take a wild guess that town meeting's not going to finish in one night, just a wild guess, assuming that we are back on Tuesday.
I'm going to take that back. Look at, look at all the, I got three votes already. I didn't even make a motion.
Assuming that we're going to be back on the Tuesday, if we decide that we need to talk to the school committee based on what we've learned on that Monday, like it's an urgent thing, we can do it then. If we feel like, okay, we know where the books are going to, we know where things are going to fall, it would be better to have it, have the, have the bigger discussion at a later date when we could do it then.
And the other reason for a longer time is, one of the questions I would have is, sitting in on the school finance committee meetings, I know that next year's budget was developed off of last year's budget and now with, so that'd be a question I would have too, is how does that affect us moving forward? Not just last year.
Does that sound like a reasonable approach to everybody?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Let's go ahead and do that. Any other questions? All right. Moving on to item number seven, we have a report from the Department of Public Works Director, Marina Fernandez.
Who's been waiting here so patiently.
Very patiently. Thank you very much. And just as a quick way of introducing this segment, I will say, you know, or item on our agenda, we've had this idea of bringing in department heads to talk to the select board, kind of give us an overview of how the department's working. And I guess you drew the short or the long stick. I'm not sure which one it feels like, but this will be our first one of what will be many sessions like this. So thank you again for joining us.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody on the board. It's an honor to be here and it's an honor to start the new segue. So I did make a little, as an engineer, I did make a presentation for you all.
Is it under an hour?
I promised that there aren't a lot of graphs. So if you don't mind, I should be able to share screen. Is that okay?
You should be able to.
All right, let's try this. Excellent. Seems like it's already.
Loaded.
Loaded it up there.
There we go.
All right. So, thank you very much. This is just a short overview. I'll try to make it very short and then I'll open up if, to answer some of the questions that the board may have. My name is Marina Fernandez. I'm the new director of Public Works. Believe it or not, I've only been in this role for a little less than around five months.
I thought you were going to give it to us in days.
I did put together a little org chart for those of you that are unfamiliar with what we do. The, I really think of the Public Works as having two different arms. We have the operations arms, which is where the assistant director and our seven divisions lie within. We have vehicle maintenance, a water division, a wiring, a forestry, a highway, a support division and a sewer division. And then the other arm is located at the town hall, at the second hall, second floor. That's where our town engineer, which is currently an open and vacant position, is located. We have our engineering offices where we also have a civil engineer, a couple of interns, an environmental coordinator and a GIS specialist. So as you can see, it, currently we have 13 superior as well as administrative positions and 28 full-time labor positions. And of those currently, five are open, including the town engineer. Just briefly talking about the divisions, the forestry is where we use, we plant, it plants, maintains shade trees, it works with the shade tree committee, and it also responds to emergency during storm events. The water division complies with federal and state drinking water laws. It maintains hydrants, our water main or surface lines. It completes annual water main flushing program, which you may have seen signs for around town. We also do lead and copper testing, which is separate from the lead and copper inventory, which I'll speak in a second. It also installs meters and keep records and inspections. This is just a brief overview because they do a lot. Sewer division maintains eight pumping stations in nearly 100 miles of sewers.
Recording and.
No worries. It includes 3,000 manholes in response to emergency services calls. Our vehicle maintenance maintains approximately 200 vehicles and equipments for numerous departments. There was, there's been a lot of conversation about that. Our wiring division maintains 3,300 street lights as well, master boxes, traffic signals and all that really nice decorative lighting that we've seen around town. Our drain division, we clean, we dredge, catch basins, we complete annual street sweepings. And our support division does everything else. They really are ninjas. They pick up trash, maintain islands, they ride of waves, install, maintain, maintain street signs, et cetera. Oh, I can't not skip over that. I'll talk briefly about snow and ice, and that is our beautiful shed. So we're very appreciative. It's been working out great having a new location to store our salt, which was a game changer this past snow event because a lot of communities, which you may have heard, were running out of salt and we were not. So thank goodness for that. Just to highlight a little bit of equipment and personnel, we have eight six-wheel dump trucks with plows and sanders. Sanders is, I should not have used that word, it's salters. We do not use sand. Three sidewalk tractors with snow blowers and plows. We also have an in-house CDL drivers program where we are really trying to insta, ingrain the culture of promoting within and providing the, the training and educational programs that our staff needs to really move up the chain. We also just were the first in New England to pilot a plow up program. You can see it on that, on this graph here on the side. It's a bit tough. Maybe could we, we can't hit the light for you guys?
Well, that's where the at-home, I don't know.
The at-home folks, I think, can see it pretty good.
Okay.
Everybody else here.
Basically, we were able to figure out where we, where our trucks were at all the time during, during our salting operation so that we were not missing a street during salt events. And we are also using the icing agents. Like I said, we use salt as well as we're starting the organic liquid mix, which is something that is widely used. There is really a science behind snow and ice. And if you guys want to learn more, I'm more than happy to discuss.
I'm just going to pause you real quick too, CDL's commercial driver's license.
Oh, yes. I apologize. Yes. Thank you so much. I'm just so used to this that sometimes I forget all pronouns. The engineering, we do a lot with the very little staff that we have. We are planning and overseeing capital projects such as the water main replacement construction, which we were so blessed to have ARPA money available in the two years directly after COVID, which really got us to get a head start on our water main projects. We are currently going out to bid on a water service replacement and identification construction project that is also mandated by the EPA. And last year, we did $1.7 million worth of sewer lining and replacement construction. This is really innovative, less invasive, trying to do less of a, of a dig and more of a proactive approach into our sewers. Again, I can go on for days on about that. Really interesting and innovative stuff, but also very widely used in, across the country and New England. We just completed our lead inventory program. We still have house to house ongoing. So folks that are watching, if you see a couple of our interns out there, we are trying to identify services from the home, not, that's not always available. Sometimes the unknown portion is on the street side and getting to a home will not help us. But we have everything really mapped up and we're going house to house. Every time we get into a home and we're able to figure out that, hey, that's not a lead service, it's a copper, we noted it in the inventory and it's one less dig that we have to do further down the line. Please, if you're watching this, do go to our website under the townofmilton.org at that link under engineering. You can hit the, I want to learn more. There is a lead service inventory. You can find out what your service current is, is, whether or not you have lead, whether or not you have an unknown lead service material, or if you are great and you have copper on both sides. We are also overseeing all of best management practices. That's what BMP stands for, which is for drain infrastructure and green infrastructure around town. And we oversee our MS4, which is a municipal permitting for watersheds. And. And we also oversee a pavement management program, we have approximately a hundred miles of roadway in town, and that program scores each segment of the road, that is called the road surface rating, RSR, for each of those street segments, and based on those ratings, we know what kind of, we, I feel like we, and I'll talk about it in a second, there is a toolbox for which, how we choose to maintain a road. And everything is based on a cost-effective analysis of that road. And it's also based on what the condition of that road is, and whether or not that mechanism of prevention or reconstruction of that road is the most cost-effective for how that road stands. So everything stems from the pavement management program, which by the way, we just got it, we have requested, not requested, but best practices that we do it every four to five years, and we just completed that one now. So based on that roadway program, we figure out what roads we are going to do the selective types of treatments, based on our toolbox for those treatments, everything goes onto our website, I will link right now, so you can see it live, how it looks, and I would urge our residents to always go to our website to see whether or not they are, what kind of treatment they're going to get on their roadways and their score for that year. We do not post too many years ahead, because a lot of things can change. Everything is based on the, on the money we have available for pavement programs for that year, as well as what we have planning for our water main work, too. So there are different drivers for what kind of road treatment everything's going to get. But when you hit that link, you get to this website, which I'll have to stop sharing, share it again. This is the Town of Milton Engineering, you go to your roadway preservation and construction, you can learn a bit more. This is our pavement management program, the summary of that report is listed right here. So right now, these are the roads that got a fog seal treatment, it also explains what a fog seal means and when everything's going to be done, you can see that those roads were already completed. Updates on the schedule, we have micro-surfacing coming up for these roads, and we have mil and overlay, which is your typical program that will be coming up for those roads. So everything is here, and then you have a summary map that, that has, is now showing every single location mapped for you. So with that being said, finishing up the we also have our solid waste, we did hire a new environmental coordinator, she started three months ago, she's doing awesome. We have a very excellent team, I just cannot say enough about all of our workers, our our operations folks, they're out there during the snow events, it's really tough, I don't think I have, I realized how tough of a job that really is during snow events, during rain events, they're out there flushing at night. Also, when, when the water use is less, we have a really great civil engineer, his name's Sky, he's such a responsive guy and environmental coordinator, just in the last three months, she has expanded our solid waste and recycling program. We're now accepting string lights, plastic films, as of this last week, and we are also doing a pilot program for food scraps. Please go onto our Facebook account, it has a lot more of information. I don't have the time to go into the details, what really is plastic film, what we're trying to collect. We supported the green up in April, many community members and just the community really came together in the cleanup across town, it was great. And then there is a picture of our certificate as a leader in sustainability for green mattresses. This all stems from the idea that really, we have, we have to be stewards of the environment, and there's not enough landfill space around, the cost also as a community is only going to go up. So we really need to be thinking outside the box here, how to, you know, not, how to dispose of, of our solid waste in recycling and not contaminating, because the contamination, when you throw trash hidden inside a recycle bin, it does cost the town a lot more, so we, you know, it goes back to what we're all, what you're all trying to do just a second ago when we were talking about budget. And then while I have the platform, I couldn't go without reminding everyone, please submit your request if you're looking for tree planting. We have around thirty trees left for the season, so please submit one, if you don't get into the list this season, if you don't grab one of the last thirty trees, we will plant another tree for you in the fall. Also, we just launched an adopt an island program, there's some businesses out there that are doing a great job, already maintaining a tree, and we really made it more, more of a robust, where they have, they have an application, and it's all listed within the town, et cetera. Also, we have several ways for you to reach out to us if you have missed trash yard waste. You can email, you can call, or you can use the Recycle Milton app. Please don't, don't feel like you're, if you already use that email, you might not hear back from us, but we are working with Star Waste, we have a dedicated employee now who's been providing us information, and we're providing those back to the residents, so we will reach out to residents that need our feedback. But if you don't hear from us, that means that everything is going to get picked up. With that being said, please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, is that the end of the presentation?
Yes.
If you want to stop sharing, we'll go back to.
Of course, sorry.
To you.
Back to you, so questions?
First, I didn't know there was a Recycle Milton app, so I just know that now. I have one question on the roads, so I take from what you said, that the roads that have the most volume and traffic are the ones that we're going to take care of first. What's the process for getting to roads that may be in, be getting to states of disrepair, but they may not have that much usage? So, you know, where do they fall on the, on the repair timeline or checklist?
So if your road is in, needs full reconstruction, which is the more, most costly type of of reconstruction, and it's a less traveled, you're in the bottom of the list. That is the honest truth. And I would ask the board if I had a chance in the future to come back and go into the details on the, if you are interested, I can provide more information, there is, we are aging, our roads in the Town of Milton are aging faster than we are putting money towards. We have about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the Chapter 90 program in the last year, and or two, they have added another three hundred, so we're now getting around nine hundred thousand through the fair share program. And we also appropriate a million dollars. That million dollar appropriation has been appropriated over the, as long as I have been here, and I think it was appropriated even before I was here. And that includes doing all of our sidewalks, doing our roadways, and.
Curbing.
Curbing, and when we do our roadways, it's not only the cost of the roadways, but we also, because we are accepting federal Chapter 90, state Chapter 90 money, we have to make that roadway compliant with ADA compliance. So the sidewalks also have to be done, and they have to be passable, and all of our wheelchairs have to be done and have to be passable. So and the cost of, as you know, what you used as a budget for construction in a, if you were to renew your house five years ago, you can probably only get half of it done this year. So we have been very diligent about using all these other tools, and really trying to reach the, the roads that we can do preservation maintenance. But I agree with you, and we know that the roads that are less traveled and need full reconstruction at this point are on the bottom of the line.
What would it take to change that?
More money?
What's the standard of repair, right, because, you know, the longer it does take, the worse those roads are going to get.
So I would, you know, if you are interested, that, I would share with Nick, that summary talks about what, where we are going to be in five years, you see that, that road value, and our, our consultants have looked at what if we were to add more money, how we could age less. I think that the, the, there is an industry factor, I believe that we would like to be going forward a couple of points every year, right now, we're declining a couple of points every year, on the total roadway, the total roadway scores. I and the DPW, more than anyone, would like our roads to have less poples.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
If I understand, a couple of other, I mean, Marina alluded to a couple of these points, but, you know, other factors would be, are we going to replace that water main on that street? So maybe a street would move up the list, because its water main has had a number of leaks, and we want to address that. Is National Grid going to come in and rip up the road to replace the gas main? And some streets are on the list, the share of pavement, because Grid was going to come in and pave half the street. Well, maybe we'll take a payment from National Grid and use that money elsewhere, and we'll pay to do the whole street, rather than just only have half the street repaired. So there are other factors that might grab a road that we wouldn't, we weren't planning to do necessarily with our own money. So that's in terms of her reference to the tools we have, in terms of what we're going to do to a road, but there's also tools we have in terms of what other factors might contribute to a road making, creeping up a list that might not otherwise.
And if I may add, because you brought up a good point, there's also the age of the infrastructure underneath it. There's no point of me just reconstructing a road, because without looking at the infrastructure underneath it. If I have a nineteen twelve water main underneath it, guess what's going to happen to it, three months after the road is beautiful? Right, because you, you are compacting that road, you're bringing in trucks, so that it's also a limiting factor is, then we also have to invest in the water infrastructure, which is also very costly, right? In order to keep up just the roadway, if we were just to blindly do all roads, just to bring that, if, bring that score up, there's also, we need to start looking at the infrastructure, and the ideal way of doing it, which by far, we, we are unable to do it ideally, just not us, but generally, it, it would, we would need to do all of our infrastructure underneath it. The Town of Milton DPW, we do CCTV, and we investigate the structure of all of our stormwater drains and sewers before we reconstruct a road, to make sure that if there is a point repaired within our sewers and our, and our drains, and we also look at the age of the water infrastructure, and we also reach out to National Grid, to your point, Nick, to make sure that they are in before, that's why, so for example, I'll give Windsor Road as an example, they, their road's been dug up for a while, it's because we coordinated with National Grid, they came in at their schedule, they did that work, then we CCTV, we did the investigation on the drain, we did investigations on the sewer, we are, we replaced the water main, and now, now they're going to get it paved, that's really the right way of doing it, in order to try not to have those, those infrastructures repaired, they might still happen, trust me. But the likelihood and the risk is less, it's a better way of investing our money as well.
Other questions?
You do, but I'll wait till everybody else is done.
I just want to thank you, I obviously can talk about this all day, and I do.
That's why I was waiting, I was giving you half an hour.
I just had two quick questions, so I see a hundred miles of roadway, do we have any structures that, that we own, that, that you have to maintain, you know, do we have culverts or anything like that, or any bridges, or, or is it just roadway? And then my other question is, I was looking at the org chart, and I was just wondering, like, where does traffic signal timing live?
Sure, in the wiring department, we have a dedicated person who does that, so if any timing is off, that, we do receive calls every now and then about asking us to look at a timing of an intersection, and he goes out and he takes a look, you might have seen him around. It's Jack and Kevin, our two staff, they're out around on bucket trucks going up and looking at intersection timing. For, we do own a dam, and we own several culverts, not as many as you probably would imagine.
Water tank, you own a water tank as well, up in the Boils?
Right, and the pump stations and the water tanks, and all the catch basins and the three thousand manholes, and the list goes on and on, but in terms of, other than the roadway and the water and the sewer and the drain, it would be the dam and the culverts.
No small bridges?
No. Those are massive, yeah.
Well, sometimes municipalities own the under twenty feet.
Right.
But that's good that we don't have.
You would know.
They're expensive.
Mr. Cohen?
Well, the only thing I would like to say too is thank you, because typically when people call Public Works, they typically call them with a complaint, so I know you don't get a lot of, gee, you're doing a great job, so I'd just like to say, gee, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, we do have a little kudos wall, so when we do have the, yay, you're doing a good job, we put it up, and everybody gets so happy, so, just so you know.
But it's great for people to hear at home, you know, acknowledge the good work, Mr. Wilson, you had some questions?
Thank you, just a couple of questions, thank you Marina, as you know, the DPW, I'm very fond, you have a great crew. Even going back to my many years in the police department, my ten years as chief, like in any crisis that we had, whether it was snow, rain, wind, trees, whatever it was, a large event, you couldn't do it without the help of your crews, and they're, they're very good about that. Couple of things, the trees, I know Ricky Maglo does a real good job, and for the, and I'm saying this for the residents around town, if you have a new tree and you see those green bags, go help them out, water them, you know, especially when we get in, when we're not, it hasn't hit here yet, but summary is coming, I don't know what day it's coming, but, but if you can help, this is taking a lot of work to get to the point where the town is planting trees on a regular basis, and to the residents who get them, help with them, because they really need a lot of water. So it doesn't help just go dump a five-gallon bucket of water in those green bags, and Ricky and your crew, they do a real good job, but that's another. Second thing, and this isn't so much for you, this is more from Mr. Milano, a lot of people ask about recycling at the parks, and I don't know how we're ever going to get to that, but it's something we need to start to look at, instead of just trash, just, you know, just next, we own the trash ticker program, just to highlight everyone at home, where can we get trash stickers? Are they available where in town now, who sells them? Other than the town hall, the treasurer's office?
The treasurer's office, the the seven eleven in the fruit center.
Okay, both seven elevens, Houston Avenue and twenty, do we know if that's?
I believe they built it. I think Sunny has some too at the Central Liquors.
Well, that's good, so that's, so.
Milton Food Mart too, that's right.
Oh, Milton Food Mart, I see, there we go, see, I knew it asked, I knew it asked important questions, like, that a lot of people don't know about, that are part of your the last thing, so, because I am cheering capital, and Amy, who is the brains of our operations here tonight, I know you do get chapter seventy money, but the million dollars that budget on our capital every year for, I remember in capital nine years, and I don't think it's changed since I got there, and a million dollars, to Mr. Daly's point, doesn't go as far today as it did, and we did, to Amy's kind of bring this up, so I would, I would ask, when we get to the cap, to a capital budgets fall, when we start from this year, I think it probably behooves us to have you come in and start to have discussions to how we find a way to get that to, because I remember a time when that was zero, and it was, there was no money really, it was just, whatever you got for chapter seventy was your money, and that's all that you did for repaving for a year, so I know that's a big aspect, and to Mr. Daly's point. Um I know that's a big aspect and it to Mr. Daly's point, his question has been asked by so many residents. So many times I know why you're asking it, so um that is something I think we wanna have you come in and address.
I'd be happy to, and time, timing is perfect, because this is a very fresh report, we just came, just came from a consultant.
And thank you again, thank you everyone.
Preview, they're recommended one point five million, so we can start to germinate on that for now. So I I do have a couple of quick questions. Uh thank you, Mr. Wells. Um so Director Fernandez, thank you so much for coming in. Again, I wanna echo what everyone else has said. Um incredible work. I particularly um love the effort at transparency. Uh in terms of making things available on the website, I think that's great. Maybe we can have a discussion about, do we wanna? Um have like rotating links or, you know, things on our homepage that might, uh you know, that might be of interest to folks, like when the new. Road study drops, maybe we can, you know, highlight that on the front page for for a week or something like that. Um that's more of a Mr. Mr. Milano question. Um so these are probably pretty quick yes and no questions, but when we talk about the hundred miles of. Roads in Milton, does that include like one thirty eight or any of the state roads?
No, no state and no D, no state and no DCR roads. We also have DCR roads and it uh it's center mile.
Okay, um so I just just wanted to make sure that folks were aware of that, if they're on a on a state road, that that's a different, it's a different process.
That is correct.
The food scraps program, I'm excited to hear about this. So this would be to drop off at the DPW if you had, so some folks, I I compost and subscribe to the Black Earth Compost. I don't have a fiscal interest in it, I just think it's very nice. Um but this would, this would basically be a co- a town compost.
That is correct. We actually are subscribed, subs- we subscribe for a pickup for folks that do, I believe that. I just got a subscription for a Black Earth composting, cause I wanted to live through it as well and um. I think it's a three dollars, don't quote me, I'm I'm I think it's around three dollars a week for you to have that little green. Uh folks have may seen it in from your neighbor, um you get a pickup. A a a little bin that gets picked up magically by a third party Black Earth composting. Um the town has over four hundred residents that are subscriber to that program, so the town gets a um. Uh everyone in the town gets a discount. You pay for the bin and then you pay for the month, the weekly subscription. For those that do not want to subscribe to that program. They can just go to the town DPW uh at eight, open twenty-four seven, there is a little green dumpster there. Uh we are applying for a grant to get a more secured cover, which which is gonna look much better. So please don't judge the little dumpster for now. Um um and then folks are gonna be able to get in. In access, we're also looking at a li- having a little passcode that would be available for everyone, so that just the regular passerby. Doesn't just throw trash unbeknownst to them, although the cover is gonna be really screaming, it's gonna look different than your regular trash can. Um so that if you are having a barbecue, you have leftover food scraps from a big. Meal prep, you might just wanna run over there and drop it off. Cause you know that that gets, those bags get really heavy and we pay by ton when we are um throwing it in the trash. So it's just a different option for folks.
Absolutely.
Um and I would say that you you can buy a little kitchen cover thing. Uh that you can keep, you probably have that so that you can um s- um separate your food scraps and you leave that in your sink. Uh um put it in a bag, the bag has to be, a- and then you throw it, uh not with the bag, the bag cannot go in with a food scrap.
If it's a compostable bag, could it go in or no?
It is. Um the Milton Time is actually doing a whole piece on it with our environmental coordinator. So really doing an outreach and then uh one of our intern is also doing the business case of uh study. Of composting for our municipality, so we're really trying to look at both the practicality, the environmental stewardship. As well as the cost effectiveness for our residents.
Thank you. Um another quick question, um the plastic film, that's not for putting into your recycling bin, that's for bringing to DPW. Is that right?
You bring it to uh first Saturday of the month, uh you bring it in uh any plastic bags. Uh stop and shop programs all around are already accepting that, but if you ha- if you like me. I I'm not making runs through the stop and shop, I go to another service provider. Um just while you're doing your your monthly recycle, bring, you can bring um your. It 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 is on the, it's, I I think it was on my presentation, what is accepted.
Right, yeah. I just wanted to make sure people didn't start putting that in their recycling bins, thinking that it was recyclable that way.
Thank you. No, that is for the uh recycling pickup program. As well as the string lights, which I think we're gonna get a bunch um during the holiday season.
This is a, what are you referring to in plastic film? You mean like ceramic, like?
No, like um pla- well, so there was a slide on about, yeah, like a grocery bag. There were some that were acceptable, some that weren't.
It's store bags, bubble bags, uh bubble, bubble wrap, Ziploc bags, bread bags. Cassandra had a little nice little, she has a little thing that says if it wraps, I I can't, it's it's a jingle. I'm sorry.
Hopefully we'll get that in there next time. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't ask this on behalf of a a lot of the children in Milton. Is there uh an effort to name the snowplows in in the works?
Oh, that would, never thought about it, totally.
If we're starting to track them on the map and everything, I think the elementary schools might get a kick out of uh naming the plows.
We should.
Someone's plagiarizing, huh?
Imitation is the best, the highest form of flattery.
Do we have any other questions for our director? So again, thank you so much for taking the time this evening to be here and thank you for all the work, please thank your staff for us too, and we will endeavor to make sure that. We get some more props on the prop wall for for the good work that's being done.
I really appreciate it and your support is just tremendous. I I, none of this would have been done without the support of the select board as well as the residents, so I. I re- I really appreciate it. It's definitely a mutual relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can move on to item eight, and I think we're gonna start to hit some quicker.
Let's go. I just looked at the clock.
Special town meeting, uh Mr. Milano, is there anything for us to do here?
Uh no updates, just in terms of where the warrant committee recommendations stand, they did finish their work. The warrant committee recommends um that the town adopts or approve articles one through five. Uh their recommendation is a no on article six, but I just wanted to report. Their recommendations, they've wrapped that work since the select board last met. And all those recommendations, we're getting them onto the town website, uh so they should be there uh by the end of this week.
And always thanks to the warrant committee for all of their work. Um so do we wanna uh, i- does anybody wanna do anything about the um the articles? Are we are we okay for now? Wait till Monday? Um unless someone wants to. Um uh so then uh moving on number nine, uh we have the discussion approval of town.
I'm sorry, could I go back to the town meeting? It came up at public comment, but it also came up at our joint meeting with the planning board, it was a question of UTIL. And presence at town meeting, so just as of right now. I know their this, their staff is available, but hasn't been requested to attend by us or the planning board, so I. It'd be, we don't have a meeting between now and then, um so whether UTIL will be asked to attend or not, I just wanted to clarify that with this board. If there's.
No, I think that's a, that's a good point. Thoughts about that?
I would like for them to be there.
Yeah, I I think it's information that will be helpful, so.
Okay.
The only question I would, how did they present, like, did they present for the ten percent and then present again for the twenty-five percent or?
Well, I think it sounds from this board that you'd be open to letting them make a presentation about both in terms of explaining what the zoning would mean. What the the lines are, what the what the results could be.
I think that would be fair.
For both, and I'll I'll check with the planning board if if they plan to just do a presentation on their proposal. As well, and and in lieu of UTIL, I I think we would defer to the planning board on that article.
Sure, but I I'd like the planning board to know that if they'd like UTIL to be present to also back up anything on the ten percent plan, that they would be there.
Okay.
Um but if, you know, I would defer to them if they would say they would rather do it than have UTIL do it, but still to ask UTIL to be present in case there are questions.
All right, I will coordinate that.
Do we need a motion on that or? Um okay, so back to item number nine, that's anything else? That was a, that was a really good and important flag. Okay, so number nine, uh town council interview date.
I sent out a poll to members, I didn't get any responses, so I can.
I did your, I did your. I did your review, I didn't do the poll.
Uh so we can include these for our next Monday's meeting and I will resend the link. And I had, I I grabbed fifteen blocks of time, so in theory. Uh we might be able to find a date for both town council interviews and a select board retreat, depending on responses. I went out to like mid-July, so I can always add more if dates aren't working.
So I, including myself in this instruction, ask all of our select board members to please fill out your Google doodle poll or whatever it happens to be.
First time I used it, so we'll see if it works.
I couldn't get into it, now that you say that.
It's a link, so let me know if you have any issues.
Okay.
That was my fear.
Yes, you can guess. So we have the next item is a school building committee appointment.
No, no, the next one is discussional.
The select board retreat date, so I guess that's the same, that's the same issue, so I was. That's that's on that as well, and ideally, um no, that's totally fine. Um both of those are are, I think, lengthy, but you know, we can probably also make up for that by not having. You know, maybe a a meeting, maybe just one meeting in August, or maybe one meeting in July and then a meeting in August, something like that, so.
That's what we usually do, I think.
Um it maybe, may go a little longer, but it would just be the one, so um let's think about that. So then, uh sorry, you're right, Mr. Cohen, that was uh item ten, uh ten, item eleven is the school building. So this is, uh I understand, Mr. Milano, that per the uh MSBA rules, where we have to appoint one of our. Uh members here. Do we have any volunteers or nominations?
I would nominate uh Member Hagerty if she would accept.
Would you accept?
I'll accept.
All right.
You sure? You don't look happy about it.
I'm okay. I look across the table, you look concerned.
No, I'm just, I'm I'm like.
Could we need a second on that nomination?
No, so I just.
Anybody else?
You're gonna come off?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen. Yes, yes. Any, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, uh all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations on another meeting.
God bless.
I had to pick up my third committee, I only had two.
There you go. Um so now we have a discussion, update, approval, select board, school committee, warrant committee, budget review committee. Charge and membership. Um so this is the uh the charge that Mr. Milano has passed out to us here on paper. Um for the Milton Budget Coordination Committee. Um Mr. Milano, do you wanna begin?
Uh sure, so I included this in the board's packet. Broadly, the charge is kinda three main task items. Meet monthly to review the current fiscal year budget, actual. Discuss the revenue and expenditure outlook for the upcoming fiscal year as the town moves through its budget development process, and then thirdly, to review. And um discuss the long range financial plan and financial forecast. Um the committee is meant to serve to. You know, coordinate communication, coordinate um. Co- court, communicate, communication and coordination and information sharing throughout the budget review process. While not overstepping in terms of roles that are already identified, whether it's the town administrator's authorities, the school committee's authorities to control its budget. And ultimately, the warrant committee's role in in preparing and making a recommendation on the budget to town meeting. Uh in terms of membership, um we had talked already about two members of the select board, two members of the school committee, two members of the warrant committee. At our last meeting, um as Hagerty mentioned, potentially a member of the planning board, so I have included that um as part of conversation. You know, myself and Amy, John Phelan and and Katie Blake's positions are all anticipated to, you know, participate. Um as needed, attend meetings as needed. Um so that's broadly the charge. The title I came up with, and I'm not a good spin doctor here, but Milton Budget Coordination Committee. Uh was the current working title, open to suggestions on that as well. Or tweaks um and revisions to the charge. I I thought this is a good place to get the conversation started. And I will note, I sent it out to um warrant committee, school committee representatives and um. Meredith Hall, the chair of the planning board, uh late last week, just to to get that in front of them in case there are any uh further feedback elsewhere.
Mr. Wells?
So going back to, while I was still chair, I thought we had talked about. The school committee and us each designating a non-voting resident to suit this committee.
I think that that had been discussed. I don't know that we had agreed to it, cause I think we're still agreeing what this looks like, but I think that's a a a suggestion.
I'm still proponent of that. I'm proponent of that. And the reason I said no, cause all the other, otherwise you give a citizen a vote on a budget that all these others have. Everyone else has a voting role in there, so I I think especially in light of the past year. To me, any expertise we can get to help with this right now is important, so I know there is one resident. At least two, and I don't know if anybody else has anyone, but I know this one.
Probably have the same resident in mind, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker, yeah, so I I'd, I'd be, and I don't know if we have to make it tonight, but I'd be inclined to appoint. A non-voting resident to represent us as, and then let the schools pick whoever they want to do the same.
I think that's a, that's a good change we could make to the, to the uh the membership, Mr. Cohen?
The other um comment I had is, is this language shall meet monthly to review the current fiscal year budget to actual analysis? Is that? Good enough to make it like? Monthly, you know what I mean? Sounds like current fiscal year instead of monthly, looking at the actuals. I'm I'm getting towards what's going on right now and trying to get ahead of that a little bit. I I don't know, I'm just saying.
That is the intention, if the language needs to be changed anyway, I'm open to a suggestion, but that, your. Your phrasing is the intention we're looking for, I thought that captured it, but I'm happy to tweak the language if helpful.
Or if the mission, like, to me, I I, to me, like, we we don't micromanage committees, like, to me, if they have to meet twice a month, like, they gotta like, just. I'm.
Uh yeah, you could say something like, uh at least, at least once a month or something like that. So then it's, you know, if they decide they need to meet more than once a month.
Or if things are really going good, they don't have to meet a month.
Yeah, that's true.
I think also part of the, part of the mission here is to bring. To bring all these folks to the table, so that they have awareness of how. Their actions, their piece of the enterprise fits in. Um among puzzle pieces, how it, how it all fits together, how it all operates together. I don't think we necessarily need to go through month by month and sort of scour and say. Where are these receipts, et cetera, but we have these tools, like a long range financial plan. We've got other strategic plans and things in the, in the environment. Not to make it too high level, but. We, we, we can have monthly conversations to, to understand where we need to go. And, you know, what are, what are the current issues? How, how are these issues informing all of our actions? And I think we'll probably tweak it as we go, right? Maybe we'll have different suggestions for different types of financial reporting. That might be beneficial to everyone.
Mr. Wells, did you have?
Are we doing this tonight?
Um well, I think we can, we can, we can a- ask for amendments to it and maybe just approve new language once we.
So if I heard it correctly, so it'd be two additional residents, one appointed by the select board, one appointed by the school committee as non-voting members.
Yes.
Is that what I heard?
I think, yeah, is everybody okay with that? Um Mr. Daly, did you have?
No, I think we we discussed some of this in the finance committee meeting and our charges here. I think the most important thing that we talked about in our, in our meeting was that this is. A answer to residents who wanted the boards to work. You know, clearly together and visibly, especially coming off the override and sort of our, getting our fiscal house in order, so I think it's incredibly important.
So it, let me, I don't wanna throw a monkey wrench into the works here, but um I I. I am cognizant of the problem of when you create a committee, it exists for, in perpetuity unless you.
Post sunset?
Yeah, and so I wonder if we should, if we're, if, and I I'm I'm throwing this out to the board, you know, I I I would appreciate everybody's thoughts about it. But I wonder if we think about having this committee come together for a year to do this work and then. for a year to do this work, and then part of the charges at the end of the year to make recommendations to each of the participating select board, school committee, warrant committee, planning board, on how, on best practices for sharing, and then we could leave it open to, if, if after a year they come back and they say, oh, you guys are really in trouble, like, we need to, we need to keep working on this, then we can agree to sort of keep it going for another year. But if they come back with recommendations that, that we find compelling, and then we can, and that also prevents us, you know, from, if, if, you know, Mr. Walker, for example, he doesn't sign up for what ends up being like a five-year term, you know, it could just be a year term, and then, you know, coming towards the end of, of the fiscal, next fiscal year, we could review it. How, how do folks feel about that?
What you mean is, decide if the committee wants to continue on.
Correct.
I agree, I, I agree. There needs to be something to make sure.
Yeah, so, and as part of the charge, I think, coming up with a recommendation that they give us at the end of the year, and, or, you know, that they actually, they should probably be giving recommendations to each of the boards that are participating.
Okay. I'll work in language that affects for consideration, and redraft it, and we'll include it on next week's agenda before the meeting. And I'll redistribute it as well in the draft to the relevant groups involved.
Yeah, and I spoke a couple of times with Mr. Walker, and I, I, I think he, anyone who volunteers for a committee like this and is energized by it, particularly understanding that it would be a non-voting role, his time on the warrant committee and other parts of town, I think, are compelling, that he would have some good, unique insights on the process and add some value. But we can probably vote on that also on Monday, and then if, if that makes sense. And then we'll, that, we can notify the school committee, and they may have some ideas about who they might want to appoint.
I know that former Chair Carroll and Mark Owen were aware of it, because we talked when we were going through the whole, before you guys got here, on how we're going to address, as you know, going forward, so.
Yeah. I think this is a great step forward for the town, though, and I think the, the end goal here is really positive. So, thank you, Mr. Milano, for coming up with this. So we'll vote on the final version on Monday.
Sure.
All righty. And if anybody has any great ideas for a title, I should say, too. I think MBCC is pretty good, but, you know, always up for fun, fun acronym.
Well, the new conservation commission, that's what they call themselves. Justified at a hearing, it was the other day.
Next item we have, if we're done on this one, is the shared Randolph-Milton Energy Manager Memorandum of Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So similar to the agreement between Milton and Randolph of the Veterans District, we have a MOA in the packet for a, to outline the agreement for the new energy manager position to be funded by a grant from National Grid and Eversource. So it's a three-year grant, $85,000 per year. It identifies that 60% would be Randolph and 40% would be Milton, if there are any expenses that exceed that budgeted amount from the grant. We anticipate that the position would fit within the grant amount. It would also serve as the basis as we approach the end of that grant, and there's a discussion about whether Milton is going to keep its position or not, we would know that, you know, we would own 40% of that cost moving forward. And then broadly, it's, it's similar again to the Veterans District, where they're a Randolph employee primarily. They'll maintain an office in both Milton and Randolph, unless we choose, they don't need to come to have an office in Milton necessarily. Serve to each town, three, three days in Randolph, two days in Milton, but otherwise, it, it tracks with the same kind of agreement as we now regionalize two positions with Randolph, and obviously, we'll continue to look at any other options that make sense for the town. And I would be seeking approval of the MOA for my signature.
You want the MOA, or you, so I'll make, I'm going to.
You can, you can make a preliminary motion, we'll leave room to discuss if we have.
Okay, so, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the shared Randolph-Milton Energy Manager.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cohen, second. So any discussion or questions for Mr. Milano?
And, oh, one, how many hours is this?
It's a full-time position.
That's all.
And I'll just add, there's no obligation of the town, or Randolph for that matter, to keep the position. It could be a three-year, and we get a bunch of projects done and say, thank you, and we don't need it anymore, we want to keep it. So there's no requirement that we keep the position beyond the three-year timeframe.
I'd just like to make sure that we don't end up with Mondays and Fridays for this person, they do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because, you know.
The Veterans Officer is Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah, so I think that would be a good, a good model. And then if we have space for them, great. So, we, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. All right, we have some board reappointments here. Do we want to get some motions on these, or do we want to have some?
I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Mary Senna to the Board of Registered for a three-year term.
A second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. We have.
I'm gonna move to appoint Kim Johnson. Am I doing the right one? No. I'm gonna go the first one. Move to reappoint the following individuals to the Climate Action Committee for a one-year term. Ron Israel, Matt Panucci, Dr. Stephen Popkin, Kat S. Kyle Johnson, and Alex Heshash.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to appoint Kim Johnson to the Climate Action Planning Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You are on a roll, Mr. Wells.
Move to appoint Fiona Jovan.
Reappoint?
Oh, reappoint, I'm sorry, as, I'm reading from the top, as an associate member to the Climate Action Planning Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint the following individuals to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term. Jenny Russell and Kathleen O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint the following individuals to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term, John Cannon and Hans Von Lingen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint the following individuals to the Municipal Broadband Committee for a one-year term, Joseph Chamberlain, Mark Day, and Robert Lynch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next motion is to appoint Michael Zulus to the Municipal Broadband Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so one abstention. And then we're on liquor licenses.
Move to approve a one-day liquor license to Cypress Catering located at 550 Adam Street, Milton, for Saturday, June 14, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the Milton Garden tour at the Forbes House Museum, 215 Adam Street, Milton, Mass.
Have a second on that?
I will second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? Liquor licenses do not come with weather guarantees, unfortunately.
No, and this one doesn't, doesn't, this one. Although the afternoon, they said it's gonna be good, so.
Hopefully, it will clear up for them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the, this is, I'm gonna move to approve the meeting minutes for April 8th.
Do we have another liquor license, or was this the only one?
That was the one we added.
This is the one we added, okay.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for April 8th, 2025?
I will second. I think Ms. Hagerty and Mr. Daly can.
Right, they can abstain. So you'll, you'll second?
I'll second. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, so then we're gonna go to Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Just, and I should have shared this at our last meeting, but the summer concert series is underway, put on by Milton Parks and Rec at the gazebo. That's Wednesday evenings, so check out that schedule, it's online, if you're interested.
Thank you, Bonnie DeBoer.
Yes. A lot of work goes into it, so we appreciate everybody's help. Obviously, town meeting is June 16th. We'll continue to post information up on the town website about that. We'll get the green sheets up there. We'll, we'll have those prepared and printed for town meeting as well on Monday. Camila already spoke about the Connect Milton event, that's tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Keys Room in the library. They'll also record that if you're unable to make it. And lastly, I know we've talked about this a couple of times, but, without an announcement, but Alex Ortiz will be joining the Milton-Randolph Veterans District as the new Veteran Service Officer, starting the first Monday in July, which is July 7th. Alex is, and has worked at the VA. He's currently, he's a graduate of Rhode Island College, an Army vet, Army mechanic, and completing a law degree presently in, in Puerto Rico, but has lived here previously and is excited to move back up to the area. So we're excited to welcome Alex, and we'll have him in for an introduction and welcome him to the community and fill that vacant position. And that's all I had, Mr. Chair, for now.
Great. Moving on to the Chair's Report, just a couple of quick items. We had a great turnout in the rain for the Pride Celebration that happened on Saturday, thanks to everybody who put so much work and effort into that. There was also a great ribbon cutting at Tucker Elementary School, celebrating the new mural, which is gorgeous. And the artist was extraordinarily thoughtful, and if you haven't seen it, it's, it's definitely worth a look. It's the wall that faces the playground at the back of Tucker, if you're looking at Tucker from Blue Hill Parkway. Thanks to everybody who came out for that in the rain, the kids were dancing in the rain, it was quite a scene. We also had Caribbean Heritage Festival on Sunday. Thank you. I know the Glover PTO is very involved in that, and, and so thank you to everyone who came out for that. And if I'm not wrong, today is also an anniversary? Is it your anniversary today?
Oh, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, okay. I saw it on Instagram, I was gonna give you credit for.
The town doesn't need to celebrate.
I was gonna give you credit.
Look at your face. You're looking over here going.
He's like, oh, did I get a wow?
Did I win money?
You know a lot about Winston personally.
It's a good thing I know.
I just saw it on Instagram on my way in.
She's trying to help you out.
I was trying to give you some cover.
Make sure my wife is not scared.
Well, happy anniversary, a day in advance, to Mr. Daly. And that is it for Chair's Report. Anybody have any other items they want to talk about? We will do public comment response. Okay, let's move to public comment response. I know, Mr. Cohen, you had a statement that you wanted to read.
I do. Milton needs to follow the law, we all agree, but, but to some, the law is clear, and others, it is not, and that is where we are. If this board agrees, I was writing this ahead of time, to filing this declaratory judgment belief, we will finally have that answer, something we should have done long ago. I agree. We have before us that very brief that was prepared pro bono by a very talented citizen attorney with a history of experience, who has been advocating for this since the beginning of this debate. This could be filed immediately. Though we're left with a decision to move forward with this filing or not, but what is there to lose? The cost is minimal, the decision could be quick, we could answer all the lingering questions, which we need a final answer. And we've been advocating for bringing the town together, and this could do just that. I, I mentioned this in there, but, you know, as, something that struck me is, is that once a 25 or 10% is adopted, from then onward, the HLC, not Milton, has the irrevocable right to always decide what Milton housing proposal comply with Milton's adopted multifamily zoning bylaw. The filing of the action plan, which none of the select boards saw until after it was submitted to HLC, adds to the urgency to this matter. I urge this board to take this action and file a declaratory judgment expeditiously, which I lost, but anyway.
Not without a long discussion.
Yep.
Any other public comment response? I'll, I'll just add, very quickly, that with everything that's going on in the world today and in this country, we have seen how easy it is for neighbors to turn against neighbors, to, to become divided. I would really just want to encourage everybody, no matter how you feel about MBTA communities, to approach the next couple of weeks with, with an open mind, with an open heart, and most importantly, with the knowledge that the people that you're discussing and invading with are your neighbors, maybe not your friends, maybe someday they will be friends, but they are people that we're gonna have to live with, and we are all extraordinarily blessed to be able to live and, and work and breathe in this town. And I, I just hope that we can really come together and continue to work, and I promise to do that on the select board, to make sure that we can repair some of these divisions to, in preparation for what may be even harder times to come.
Thank you both.
And I will add that this guy and I, we, we do like each other. We don't agree about this. We don't agree about it.
You don't agree that you like each other?
We do agree that we like each other, and, and, and we can have our, we can have our discussions and our disagreements, and they can get, they can get loud, but ultimately, we know that we have to work together for the town. And so I hope that we can take that message and go forward with it.
Thanks for setting that example for this board and for the entire town.
You're very welcome.
Really appreciate it, guys.
It's a pleasure and it's an honor.
We're going into a, we're going into executive session again?
Sorry.
We're back at it. Maybe we can come to this one.
Quick, so quickly, special town meeting, Mr. Milano already mentioned, Monday, June 16th. We'll be meeting Jews, then Tuesday, June 17th, and hopefully not Wednesday, June 18th. We, I've asked Mr. Milano if we can move our June 24th meeting to either June 30th or July 1st, because I'm gonna be in Colorado and working that evening. So I don't know if either of those dates would work for, for anybody. Either the Monday or the Tuesday of the following week.
Either works for me.
So let me have one thing to say after this, and then. Go back to those dates again, Mr. Chair.
The 30th or July 1st?
So we do the 30th in lieu of?
In lieu of the 24th.
I think I could live with that. Can we keep the meeting short, because the.
Okay.
I'll be coming off Milton Music Fest weekend, which will be, ends the night before, which is.
I think we can keep it short.
I think so. If we could do that, that'd be great. And then, just, just for, for record-keeping, I will be out of the state, and, and as I am each year, in, for a work project in Idaho from the 6th until the 14th of July.
Okay. And, and then just a reminder to all of us to check Nick's fantastic Google poll and, and respond accordingly for, for, for other things.
Do we map out, like, summer vacation times, too?
That's why we usually kind of like, I thought we took August off last year, but I thought we both, August and July, we just did one meeting, and then we had that one morning meeting just to do some, you know, business that had to be, votes that had to be taken, like.
Why don't I, I can add to that poll, the meetings that we would normally have met in July and August, and then if folks don't have conflicts, if you could identify that, if you do have conflicts, just identify that, and then we can grab the information that way.
Okay, that's great.
You know what, maybe I'll do is I'll add all the Tuesdays in July and August, and you tell me when you are available on art, and we'll try to find dates that work for everybody.
I am gonna try and take vacation in August. I'm doing it like that.
I, I mean, I'm out of town as well.
Middle two weeks, how, if you need to find me, middle two weeks of August.
Turn your phone off.
Yeah.
You don't want to be found on campus.
I'm kind of with you on this one, like, I'm doing that this year in August.
Show up, we'll have a cold beverage for you, but otherwise, yeah.
Future agenda items?
So before, just, I, I just want to make a point. Father Palladi, the pastor of St. Agath's, they had a celebration for him on Sunday. And he is a priest who grew up in this town. He grew up, his mother actually ran the house at St. Mary's Hills. He grew up on Capen Street, or Calora, Capera, I think both of them, Calora and Capen. He was an only child. Very smart kid, went to Harvard, entered the seminary, spent most of his, of his pastoral life as an educator. Was really a brilliant man in Latin and so many things, but a wonderful gift to the town. He's been at St. Agath's now for about five years, maybe not even that long, but because of medical issues, he's had to leave abruptly, and they had a farewell to him, and I just want to say thank you to him. His mother was so good to the cops and my, my, from the time I was a kid, she made the best Irish bread, she wasn't even Irish, and she would send it to the police station, I don't even know how many times I, I can remember, but thank you, Father, for your time. And again, as I, they made a beautiful tribute video, one of his dear friends and classmates from the seminary, Father John Conley from St. Teresa's, they host, they're both, their families, John Conley went to Dartmouth, and Father Palladi went to Harvard, so as I said to him, as a message from Father Conley, sorry, Father Palladi, Father Conley says, go Dartmouth. So thank you for everything you did for this town, especially the very large parish of St. Agath's. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Future agenda items? Anyone have anything that they're itching to talk about?
I think we touched on most of it tonight already.
Okay, you know, I got to ask a question. So I'm going to move that we move from, that we adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Milton Clerical Unit of the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Milton Professional Management Association, Milton Public Employee Association, Milton Firefighters Local 1116, Milton Police Association, Milton Superior Officers, Milton Library Association. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, that's all right. It's a roll call vote, Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I also am going to move that we adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation. Do we still have to do that one?
Nope.
No.
Sorry.
But do we have, we have the, it's your thing though, right?
So.
So I'm going to, I'm going to make it up, I'm going to move that we adjourn from open session and enter into executive discussion, executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session.
Second.
Is that close enough, Mr. Milano?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have a second. It's a, this is also a roll call vote, Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? And myself, yes. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.